Direction for you?
Well, the camera is right.
Okay, gotcha.
We're here talking with AK Hassan. He's running for the Richmond County Board of Education chief, representing District Three.
District Six.
District Six?
Yeah.
Thank you for correcting me already. District Three is what we did yesterday. So, this is not your first rodeo, so to speak. You've sat on the Board of Education, you've ran for the Board of Education. Tell us about your past experience with the BOA.
Well, it actually began as a private citizen involved with the magnet schools. I was encouraged to get involved with the magnet schools. I originally started out as a person that was anti-magnet schools, opposed to that process. And after having a chance to look at the plan and sit down with the board in one of the official meetings and be involved in that process, I later became an advocate for magnet schools. In addition to the fact that at 24 years old, I happened to select the first students that attended the first magnet school, which is CT Walker Magnet. A couple of years later, at 26 years old, I was elected to the Board of Education. At 27, I became president of the Board of Education, the youngest person to hold that position to date. In addition to that, I also went on to become an elected member of the old city council of Augusta prior to consolidation. And I returned to the school board briefly in 2006 for a one-year term.
So, it sounds like for normal people, that would be enough public service for a lifetime. Why are you coming back?
Well, I enjoy it. It's sort of easy for me. It's a natural, helping people with problems, helping to formulate policies and procedures that govern our school system, that can push our educational process forward to the benefit of our young people and in the interest of our total community. And it's just something that, no matter how far you get away from the process, it never really leaves your mind.
District Six is...I don't know precisely how many schools in District Six. There are no high schools? It's just a...
Yes, you have Cross Creek High School. According to the Board of Education charter, not charter, but website, those schools that are pretty much aligned with District Six, that are signed, that they list as schools of that district, would be Roy Rollins, Southside Elementary, Adartha Hines Elementary, like I said, Cross Creek High, the Vocation of Magnet School. There may be another one. I think it's like about seven. Those are the ones I can recall off the top of my head.
So, in your course of campaigning around the district, what have people been telling you that they won out of the school board? Or do they think...well, first of all, how do they think the school board is performing? And what do they expect out of their next representative?
Well, people tend to want change, but I don't necessarily assume that means personnel. They want a change of direction. They want to see better results. Obviously, they are concerned about test scores. They are concerned about overcrowded conditions on some buses. They are concerned about behavior problems as it relates to busing. So, there are a lot of different concerns that they have. And I hope to have an opportunity to work with the board members to address those concerns.
Okay. Well, we'll start with that. We'll start with test scores. Richmond County typically is one of the lower-performing school systems in the state. What ideas would you bring to the school board to try to improve test scores?
Well, the first thing we need to do is concentrate on teacher recruitment. That's essential, because we can't build a good-quality school system if we are only getting an opportunity to recruit those teachers that other systems have passed over. In addition to that, we need to have a process where our teachers...we don't have so many teachers teaching with provisional certificates, which means that they are teaching out of field. And they are getting tenure after three years as a result of teaching out of field. So, we have a person now that is vested in the system, that is a part of our permanent payroll, and they do not necessarily possess the skills that we need them to have in order to make our school system efficient. So, we have to work very, very hard in terms of teacher recruitment in order to bring stability to our classrooms and hopefully improve our test scores.
Is it difficult to attract teachers to the school system?
It appears to be, because it's about competition and it's about choice. Not just the choices that the school system makes, but the choices that the potential employees make, the teachers or whatever category of employee that might be pursuing placement. And with that in mind, we have to realize that we really have to be competitive. It isn't all about dollars, but dollars certainly help. And we need to find some very attractive, I guess, a package, a very attractive package, and put that package together to attract teachers. And we need to approach it more like a NBA lottery, or NFL lottery or something, realizing that we want the best and the brightest, the most capable first. And then, after that, if we are successful, we work with that, and then we go down the line. We don't basically just let people look at the stats of our system, where we rank 166 out of 182 school districts, and they say, "Well, this is not a desirable place for me to work." So, when other places turn them down, they come to Richmond County, because we seem to be in need still, where others have satisfied their needs. So, it's a process of trying to get out in front and have a package that is attractive enough to attract our teachers on the front end.
And that's a good idea. It reminded me of the comedy skit I saw recently, that you thought you were watching a sports draft, and it turns out it was teachers.
Okay.
They're bringing in a first-round teacher, and then they're selecting the schools. They're jumping up and down.
Fantastic.
And that's a good point. And teachers need to be told, first of all, when they're being brought into the system, that their work is valued, and you're willing to pay for the value that you're expecting.
And we do have to have the courage, as a system, that when we have teachers in place, that we not allow them to get tenure and be vested in our system if they do not have the qualifications that we need and are not preparing themselves to take on those qualifications. Because you can't work your way through a provisional certificate. You're still not working in field. We don't need you there, or whatever. And we keep you in the system, and you're still in a situation where our students are likely to be underperforming, because you're probably not as qualified as someone else who was trained in that field.
That's another good point. When I was in high school, we had a history teacher who was there. She was the head of the department. She was tenured, not necessarily because she was the best history teacher, but simply she was just there for a long time.
Right.
And you would discourage that.
Absolutely. I think that we have to make tough decisions. That's what the board is there for, and that's what the superintendent's office is there for. We have to set policies and procedures in place and say, "We need to look at people carefully by year two, because in year three, at the end of that year, they are vested." We need to make the tough decision early on, so that that person can have a chance to adjust their life and lifestyle in terms of pursuing an opportunity someplace else. And meanwhile, we need to be pursuing the talents and the skills that we need to make our system better.
Do you think it's kind of worse on the front end with teachers getting tenure too easily? Or at the other end, with maybe teachers that got tenure years ago and are just maybe not performing?
Well, from what I understand, we still have vacancies as far as teachers, you know, right now. I was at a forum a few days ago for the Neighborhood Alliance, and one of the seventh graders mentioned specifically at his school that the students have not had a permanent teacher for the last nine weeks. And that's basically not good, because getting another teacher that's probably qualified, coming behind someone that has had that first opportunity to make the first impression with these young people, is going to be difficult to overcome sometimes in terms of the, I guess, the training and the teaching instruction that they left behind to be able to pick up, particularly if they were not on point in the first place. They were not certified in the field.
In talking with the other candidates over the past week or so, one thing that has come up with, among all the candidates, is the issue of communication. Parents feel that they're not being heard by their school board representatives, and that they're not being heard by their schools. And do you think the lines of communication between parents and the school board are good? Or can they be improved? And if they can be improved, how?
Are you speaking more in terms of communication between the parents and the board? Or the system itself, or the teachers?
We'll say both.
As far as the school board is concerned, I've always been a very active public servant, and I plan to be if I'm elected. We have email, we have phone, we have texts. We have a lot of different capabilities today that I didn't have back in the 1980s. And I was efficient then, and I expect to be even more efficient now in terms of community response. How individual board members respond to their constituency obviously is solely within their power. I can't address them. All I can say is that we have the vehicles available that we can communicate very directly with the community, and I think we should. We should hold community forums. We shouldn't just wait to have hearings when we're trying to make changes or there's a perceived problem. We need to stay in contact as often as possible. The communication between the classroom, teachers, and the students, I would like to have the school board not look at these devices that young people have in terms of cell phones and other devices with internet, so we can access email, et cetera, as such something that we are opposed to. That while we can't have all the students in class with cell phones and devices and whatnot, we need to teach them to incorporate those devices into the learning process and have an educational system without borders. They can learn about things all around the world on the internet while they're at home, while they're at play, while they're entertaining. They get a thought that goes through their mind. All they need to do is put their game on pause, go on the internet, do a little bit of research, come back to their activity, and do whatever. Now, back to the issue of communication. Since these young people have these devices and their parents pay for them, why shouldn't we work with the parents to access those devices? If the parents...sometimes, I know parents that have, their children have cell phones, and they do not. You know, they say, "Well, I can use my friend's phone to call my child if I need to call my child, or my child can call my friend, because my friend work right next to me." So, if you are paying the bill, then maybe we can communicate. As a school system, the teachers can communicate primarily with parents through these devices, whether it's email, or texting, or whatever, and not wait until there's always a problem and invite the parent in, and then that's a hostile situation as opposed to a good, solid educational environment that's conducive for the children.
Let's get back to technology for a second. You talked about the technology that's available right now that wasn't when you were on the school board. Technology is emerging as a bigger issue in educating our kids with cyber coming to town. The wave of cyber, as Brooks Giel would like to say. How is...how would you incorporate the coming cyber wave into educating Richmond County students?
Well, that's a very important question, because we can have this in our presence, and if we are not prepared to take full advantage of it, then of course, we don't get the true benefit. And we are competing. It's not an exclusive Richmond County project. We are competing with the surrounding counties, probably throughout the CSRA, if not beyond that. One of the things that I think the system has gotten away from that we can do, since we are partnering with technology at Folk Gordon, et cetera, and private industry, we can basically talk to them about sometime putting on loan to us personnel. So, not just assume we know what they want, not just have teachers and instructors whom have not worked in the field teach the students, but bring in some people who are doing this on a daily basis. They can loan us personnel, sometime for a day, sometime for a week, sometime for six weeks, and likely will do it at their expense. We just have to be open to the idea of incorporating them fully into the process so that all of us can benefit.
Do you know, have other counties been doing that?
I don't know of that at this point, because I've not been actively involved in the educational system process, the system of education. But I do know in past years, when I was on the school board, it was not unusual for some industry to loan personnel temporarily to us to accomplish some task or whatever.
I mean, you mentioned competing. I mean, yes, the counties do compete. And, you know, some counties seem to have such an edge, especially for someone that's just not that familiar with the area. I mean, how can Richmond County compete with the suburban counties that spend, you know, a lot of time just cultivating this really good reputation?
Richmond County has to have more courage. As I mentioned earlier, I was a part of initiating and being one of the architects to set up magnet schools in Richmond County, which is almost 40 years now. And those schools have been the top-performing schools in our county over that period of time. We need to do some data mining. We need to look at those schools, find out what really made them successful, and get away from that nonchalant attitude of saying, "Oh, the magnet schools are not that special. They're not that great." Those students at the magnet schools, they would have made it anywhere. Well, you're not taking into account a lot of things. A sociologist, a psychiatrist, and those people that study human behavior will tell you, "There's no truth in that." You know, you have to...there's a culture. Beg your pardon?
Who has that attitude?
Well, I think if you interview people, I've been hearing it for almost 40 years now. If you interview probably board members, if you interview people in the community, that's the basic perception. We don't appreciate enough our number-one product. Imagine Coca-Cola not caring about the classic. Imagine Pepsi not caring about Pepsi. If we don't push and study and understand why these schools are successful, what's so important about a contract between a parent and the school? What makes that parent more diligent, more persistent? What makes them that when the school system calls and say, "You seem to be neglecting," they get on point better than in other schools, where there are no contracts? What makes the situation in schools that are more culturally diverse as far as black and white, where there were perceptions where if children didn't eat certain nutritions in the morning, or they didn't have someone to help them the night before, that perhaps they wouldn't perform as well? But yet, they come from the same home environment that they worked from before, and they get into this new environment of education where there's a different attitude and a different culture, and they perform extremely well. And, but we don't want to look at that. We don't want to look at, "What is it about that student's attitude in that location that would make them be better?" To assume that every student at the magnet school is performing as they are performing, and they would have performed identically the same at their previous school, is just a false assumption. You have to realize there's a culture there. And what it is about that culture that make the parents better, the teachers better, the students better, make the whole process better? We need to data mine.
Do you think maybe they downplay the success at certain schools so that there won't be just this mad rush to get your kids in them?
That's true. They probably...I would say they play it down, because they don't want to look like they're sliding the other schools and the other students. But to hold up your best as the point, the high point, and have everybody else on an incline going toward that high point, you're not sliding anybody. If you have this high point, and you're neglecting the others and not showing any desire to get the others to where this group is, then you're neglecting. But if you have them on an incline to get there... For example, I looked at an article, which I have here, where we have 13 schools that Richmond County have on the state list as a chronically failing school. I would suggest, if we looked more closely, that we could probably, out of that 13 schools, create two to four schools that would operate very, very efficiently. But then, there would be those who would say, "But what about the rest of the kids?" You incorporate them. We have to think that the school system is a process, is a process without borders. And what I mean by that is, is do we have to have a school system, a school unit that is not performing well and one that's performing very well unlinked? Who says we can't link them? We do it on college campuses. All of our students on college campuses are not linked in the same facility. Do we have to be linked? Can't we shuttle some students back and forth to have this group of kids incorporated with a higher-performing group of kids? And then, under this new concept, make them one school where the schools, the students are being exposed to the same teachers, the same academic environment? We have to be willing to have courage to make decisions. And some things, I know there are state laws, there are federal laws. But here's the unique thing about Richmond County that most people are not aware of. Richmond County's school system was founded in 1872, prior to the Georgia Constitution. The Constitution was ratified six days later, I mean, six years later, in 1878. Richmond County is a chartered school system. There are some deviations from the tradition that are available to us. And unless we are willing to explore those deviations and see how we can benefit and move forward, we will never get to where it is we need to go.
I've heard people mention that, that the charter, the school was chartered before the Georgia Constitution a few times about things. And I'm just not really sure. That's when a lot of the elections were moved back to May. They didn't move the school board elections because of the old charter, I guess. It's an unusual situation. But anyway, you got another question?
Oh, sure. You were talking about joining the high-performing schools with the challenger schools. And in a way, that kind of reminded me of what they recently started doing at Josie with the Career Skills Center that they started, which I think it's a good example of underscoring the fact that not every child going to high school is going to be cut out to go to college. So, I'd probably ask, what would you do to help the school system along with the students who are probably more destined for a career track? And to kind of improve the job market? Because also, jobs are a popular political drumbeat these days, you know, creating jobs, you know, fueling the economy. How could the school board help with that?
Well, when I was a little boy growing up, my mom used to tell me, "Get up, get dressed, go to school, and get an education." So, like most young people, I grew up thinking that education was something that someone had to put into. And the word "education" is derived from the Latin word "educere", meaning to exit, to bring out, to go out from. So, it's all about the potential that's within the individual and bringing that individual potentials, potential out. And you do that by hopefully finding a correct body of knowledge that we call "education" and applying that to that individual's potential and bring the best out of him or her. So, that means that for some people, the best would be a trade as opposed to an academic achievement in terms of, not a diploma, but the other. But anyway, in terms of graduating from college, okay? So, we have to look at students where they are, meet their needs there, try to, along the way, identify what their interests are. Because when I was growing up, the common thing was doctor, lawyer, fireman, you know, et cetera. Some people may have the gift of working on cars, and that's all they care to do. And with all the technology that's involved in an automobile today, that's a very, very worthy trade to have, and it pays very, very well. So, we should not slight any child that has a natural gift or a natural desire and inclination to do something and to perform it well. It is our job in the educational process to try to bring out of them the potential that they have within them, based on where it is that their particular and specific interests lie.
Is there any danger, though, in kind of tracking students? Like sending them down certain paths versus others?
I'm not sure there's a danger, because what we are talking about, in my mind, is incorporating a process where students and parents are making choices, just like they're making choices to attend the magnet schools. They're making choices in terms of career paths, academic selections, you know, et cetera. So, if the school system was doing like the society was doing in the old days, give your battery a test and say, you know, "You seem to be more inclined to this, and that's all you're going to do." In fact, in the older societies, they used to basically tell the people that they were predestined to do a specific type of job, and they had no allowance or choice to do anything other than that. We're not talking about that. We're talking about incorporating the parents and the children into the educational process and realize that a number of them are going to change. And a number of them are going to be multi-talented in terms of they would want to at least have touched bases with various areas as opposed to a specific area. So, as a diverse school system, offering a lot of different things, we have to make sure that we can get as many students as possible exposed to their interests.
Well, your opponent has mentioned his role as finance chair. Do you feel like that's an important role? And what type of skills would you bring to that capacity?
Well, I have, you know, that's a committee appointment, based on the president, as far as who's the committee chairman. In his case, he represents the finance committee. The main thing to understand about the finances of the Board of Education is that the Board of Education owns the budget. It doesn't belong to the superintendent or the administration. It belongs to the board. And, but the board member, but the board has 10 members. So, you have 10 members that have to agree on the priorities, what is funded, what is not funded, and at what level. I understand how these compromises must be made, how you must get your ideas into the process and hope that you can get them into the final budget, et cetera. I have the experience of that as a school board member and certainly as a former president of the school board. So, I don't anticipate having any problems being successful in terms of input into the budgetary and the financial processes of the Richmond County Board of Education, whether I am assigned to see that as a committee chairman or a member on committees.
So, the president is elected by the board?
That's correct.
To a two-year?
Two-year term.
And then, the president can make the committee appointments?
Yes. I think, I'm not sure if the charter is specific, but I think there's at least somewhat of an expectation that that person would consult with the vice president, you know, et cetera, and have some input. But traditionally, my experience has been is that the board, the board president would usually ask the board members what it is they are interested in, and then, you know, try to work it out whatever way they can, based on whatever they perceive the politics to be, I imagine.
What committees would you like to be on?
I really haven't given that much thought to it. I would know that, obviously, you'd have a finance committee, a building committee, et cetera. But I don't know whether the committee structures have changed, and I've not really given thought to where I would like to serve. The most important thing is, like I say, I realize as a board member, I'm allowed to have input. The only difference is, is that when a committee is meeting, if I'm not on that committee, they traditionally have allowed other board members to have input, but you just can't vote. So, you know, me understanding that, I know how to take advantage of that process. So, committee assignments doesn't really worry me.
To wrap it up, I always like asking school board candidates, as passionate they are about education, I always find that, you know, going back into their past, that they have a favorite teacher that has kind of influenced them as they've gone along professionally. And I wanted to ask you, who's your favorite teacher growing up?
Without question, there would be a couple of others that would be close, like third, second, and fourth, but they would be bunched together. Number one is in a class by herself, and that would be Ms. Scott, Ms. Ruby Scott. She was my first-grade teacher at Silas Explorer. I could say I would be biased toward her, because she skipped... Um, I could say I would be biased toward her because she skipped me uh from first to third grade, um, which allowed me to graduate from high school at sixteen years old. Um, but the uh, Ms. Scott was a very good teacher. Uh, she worked with her two students. Uh, she was a strong disciplinarian. They had corporal punishment back then. But she was the type teacher that would whip you because you were bothered, not because she was bothered. She didn't whip you because you got on her nerve. She whipped you because you were doing something you wasn't supposed to be doing. And there's a big difference. And um, uh, but Ms. Scott, there are sometimes when I do things that uh I want to keep secret and I need to remember where it is or how to access it or whatever, sometime I I would use Ms. Scott because she is my favorite.
Okay. We've been speaking with AK Hassan. He is a school board candidate for Richmond County Board of Education, District Six.
Yes.
Thank you very much for joining us today.
Thank you. I really enjoyed it.